Good evening and welcome to the Pittsford Board of Education meeting. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could I get a motion to approve the agenda? Thank you. And a second, thank you. Any edits? All in favor? Any opposed? That carries. Thank you. Next, could I get an approval of the minutes from the May 9th meeting? Oh, nope. I'm sorry. Backing it up. Got a public hearing for volunteer first responder property tax exemption.
Okay, so this is a procedural item in terms of a resolution that the board approved previously. At the February 8th, 2022 meeting, the board voted to opt in. And then there were some subtle changes in the language. So we felt after legal review that it would be best to bring a new resolution as part of that process. The Board of Education is to have as part of the meeting, a public hearing first, and then subsequent approval at the next Board of Education meeting. So again, just as a reminder, there are two components to this tax break. One is for volunteers who are certified by their fire or ambulance department. Is having at least two years of volunteer experience. They're entitled to a 10% assessment reduction. The second component grants a lifetime 10% assessment reduction to volunteers who are certified to have been volunteers for more than 20 years. And that exemption's permanent. The good news is previously, when you looked at the estimates, they were estimates. Based on last year's amount, there was about 2.04 million in actual assessment reductions. This assessment reduction works like a clergy exemption, which is different. So it's actually a tax shift. And that resulted in about $71,000 being shifted throughout the other towns and taxpayers around the district. So we have some hard numbers in terms of what the impact is. And at this point, we just conclude with these brief statements and pause for any questions that anyone else would have in terms of the exemption.
Any questions? Okay, thank you. With that, we'll move on to our principal's report from Ms. Heather Clayton.
Good evening. Thank you. I want to start by thanking the board and central office team for all your support. To a person at this table, you've supported us throughout this year. We really appreciate it. And also to Rich Albano, the Assistant Principal at Menon Center. Thank you for your partnership and teamwork and in this together. Appreciate it very much. I'm the person that gets up here with bragging rights, but I'm really speaking on behalf of all of our students and staff reflecting on a great year together. So want to share some highlights with all of you. So this was our welcome back photo in September. Every year we begin with some sort of mantra to get the year started. And this was "I am me" this year. And our focus this year has really been around student voice and supportive relationships. And when we talk about student voice, we're talking about the expertise the kids bring, their ideas, their perspectives, their opinions, their questions, and everything they have to offer us in the classrooms. In hand, hand in hand with that is our responsibility as adults to listen to our students' voice. And that really lends itself to our supportive relationship. So the two are very inextricably linked. And you'll see that throughout our examples this evening. So our very first superintendent's day, we focused a lot on student voice, but we also talked a lot about the role of the staff in terms of listening. And it's one thing to encourage our kids to amplify their voices in the classroom, but there's only value added to that if we learn to listen and empathize and hear what our students are saying. So this was our anchor text for the year, "I am me," a book about authenticity. And that was really a springboard for writing tasks throughout the year, different classroom activities. It was our mantra on the announcements. Every Friday morning, we would begin with, "Who are you?" And all the kids would scream, "I am me." We've done that every Friday for the year. Our last one this week, the teachers are ever so grateful for that because the kids get a little pumped about that. But here's just one student's poem at the beginning of the year. "I am me, I'm chatty, I'm creative, I am messy, I am kind, I am me." So you'll see lots of this throughout the year, hanging on kids' lockers, in morning meeting, in classroom circles, in lots of different ways. It has been threaded throughout everything we're doing. And this was actually an end of year writing piece from a kindergarten student. They were still building on the "I am me," but after a year of writing workshop bookmaking, they're learning their finger spaces, their capital letter, their punctuation, and complete sentences. "I am Jara, I have brown skin, I have a brother, I like playing outside, I don't like insects. I can do a handstand, I can't ride my bike yet. I want to be a mom, I am kind, I am me." So it's really fun to see how they've grown as writers throughout the year and how our beginning of the year slogan has kind of really played a role in everything we've done this year. Student voice is also really present in the classroom, whether we're writing in writing workshop or it's in content area studies. So this was just a fun first grade example, student nonfiction. "I like cheetos, they eat gazelles, they live in Africa." Love the spelling there. And just another quick write example of choice about music. Music is great. Music has rhythm and beat. Beat is a heart. It is strong and steady. Rhythm goes out of control in all different notes. You can make a song in the shower, the water taps on your shower cap. Listen to the crickets chirping at night. You can be a musician. We also talked a lot as a staff about how there's a big correlation between the amount of talk students do in the classroom and their academic achievement. So we also have spent a great deal of time around thinking routines and discussion protocols this year. A thinking routine is just a predictable scaffolded sequence of things students go through. It kind of trains their brain to think. But you can use thinking routines in any content area. And the children have become really well versed with that. Some that the kids use regularly are notice and wonder. So spending time looking at a prompt, or a photograph, or an artifact, or a video clip, or in just talking about what they're noticing, what they're wondering in conjunction with what they've noticed. So just routines for thinking and talking all throughout the day. This year, we also did a book study with our faculty around quick writes. So quick writes are short bursts of writing, about three to five minutes. They're nonevalutive. They're timed, but they're just low stakes, on demand writing opportunities. And the reason we really engaged in learning about this as a staff is we wanted to build our students' stamina as writers. We also wanted them used to the idea of putting pencil to paper and composing writing. Because very often, we find kids to be reluctant to write. As early as first, second grade, we're seeing it. So through these regular quick write routines, we've really seen our students grow in terms of their stamina, their willingness to take risks, their willingness to try. Our kids have told us a lot about themselves, a lot about their learning in their quick writes. So our book study group actually asked all the kids to do a quick write about what quick writes are. And that's what you see in the slide. But the kids sharing things like, "Quick writes are short writing times, you can do brain dumps, three to five minutes, best you can spell, you can pick a topic, thoughts on paper, it's brain work, you can do lists or sentences, it is fun." Plus, in a quick write, you don't need to know every single word, you just need to write. So let your pen follow you to whatever you are writing. That means you can be you. We also teach the kids that writing is thinking. So a lot of times, you think of writing as a tool for communication, but it really is a vehicle for thinking on the page. And we've spent a lot of time working with the students on that at all grade levels. And I love this, as evidenced in the second graders' hopes and dreams for the year. "I'm going to write more in second grade by thinking more." So it's always fun when you see them making those connections. Just some other ways that student voice has been alive and well. We have our annual art show. This was part of our Menon Center open house. And we featured two pieces of artwork from every student. So there was about 1,500 pieces of art. And thank you to our PTSA. We had volunteers come help us to set it up. And PTSA purchased the dividers for us. But it's a real celebration for the kids. They choose the pieces they want in the art show. They share why they want them there. And then we left the show up for the following day at school so the kids could tour the art show with their classroom teachers. And then the kids all had a hand in taking everything down and putting it away. So that was really wonderful to have their help this year, too. We got back to our International Day that we have every other year. And this is planned and done with our PTSA. And it's about a year of planning. The kids take part in demonstrations, workshops, there's a cultural show, there's hallway tables. And we have grandparents come, parents come. And it's really just our Menon Center communities sharing their cultural heritage and traditions with all of the students. And kids did a lot of written reflection following this. And I love that little quick write in the corner because that was one of our parents dancing. And she actually looked exactly like that on the stage with her gold pants. But it was just a lot of fun. And the kids were invited to wear costumes for the day. And it was just a real celebration. But then taking the time to read all the students' writing in response to the day, that just made it even more powerful. Kids enjoyed everything from the passports they were given, to the hallways, to guest speakers, to the performances. And everybody was able to see themselves that day in some special way. So that was great to be able to bring that back. And I saw you last April. So since then, we've also had one of our STEM days, which runs opposite years from our International Day. That's a fourth and fifth grade day, also run by our parents. And kids are just engaged in workshops that they select. And our parents are there sharing their expertise. So we had a surgeon actually make pans of red jello with little bones and eyeballs in them. And then the kids had their surgical hats with their names on them and tweezers. And they had to dissect the bones and eyeballs out of the jello, but got a sense for what that was all about and the teamwork. Then they ate the jello at the end, which I really wasn't privy to that part of it until I came on scene, but they had a great time. So we had the robotics club come from the high school. They were building viruses. We had a grandparent with a telescope. The kids could see the moon. Just really great opportunities. And just like our International Day, it's our families that are bringing their knowledge and expertise and stories to these events. It's not, we're not having to hire extra folks. This is just what we have at our school. And we are just so lucky for the partnerships and for that.
I just saw the board go on during the jello incident. We did have our time to see those kids.
Yes. The kids loved it. It was such a mess. It was great. Speaking of student voice, last year when I was here, I spoke to you about a student who had an idea for writing messages of peace to the Ukraine. And the kids did make their postcards and write them. We did send them over. They were put into care packages. Rock Maiden took a role in getting the postcards from our kids and sending them over. But we still hear back from places where our postcards have been and how they've touched lives. And it was a lot of fun to see the kids' artwork and writing come to fruition. Some of their pieces are on display here. And we just included some of their postcards in the presentation so you could see some of their heartfelt writing. Why is student voice so important to us? What the kids have to say makes a difference in their learning. So it brings authenticity and relevance to what they're learning. It brings value to classroom conversations. It gives us a window into our students' stories. And it just makes our jobs that much more engaging, listening to what our kids have to say. We find our kids are just doing a lot more writing and communicating and thinking through their writing. Just today, we had field day. And a student became upset with another student and took some time to reflect on that. And she just started writing a quick write, which was really like an airing of grievances about this other child. But it was a brilliant piece of writing. It had voice, it was engaging, and it was cool that she had that as a tool to kind of reflect on the situation. So, right, Rich? It was good. Also talking about, our words make a difference for our kids and their relationships. So some of the phrases that we've spent time talking about and using are things like, "Tell me more," "Let's think about what that means for you and others around you," "I care about you," "I care about you," "Here's how I was impacted by the choice that was made." Our second superintendent's day, we've had our staff writing at every faculty meeting and superintendent's day. They've been great sports about it. And when we did our superintendent's day in the spring, we asked every staff member to pick a child that challenged them. And then they had to write from first person, perspective from that child. They had to write some free verse poetry from the perspective of the child. So it was really powerful for them to take on the persona of the child that challenged them the most, step into the child's shoes, think about what their day is like, write about it, and then talk about it. And it was a really powerful experience for our staff. We had tears, we had laughter. It was just a really great way to kind of put ourselves in the kids' shoes, hear their stories, and reflect on who they are as people. So it's just been a wonderful year since I've seen you. And we've had a lot of fun with the kids, a lot of focus on learning, but also really making those connections and enjoying elementary school. We're just very fortunate. So just to close here, some of our friends at the end. And the little one in the top, she moved here from Japan this year, speaking no English. She's grown leaps and bounds. She's a writer, she's a reader, she's got lots of friends, she's conversing in the classroom. But we just learned she's going back to Japan, which is just breaking all of our hearts. But she had such a brilliant year here and has grown so much. And it just speaks to the community of learners that we have. So thanks for the opportunity to just share some highlights of what we've been up to at Menon Center. And thank you again for your support. Any questions?
Anybody have any questions? All good. Well, thank you very much. We did enjoy our tour and visit with the staff. It was a lot of fun. So thank you, Heather.
Come over anytime.
Thanks, Heather.
Yeah.
Thanks, Rich.
Thank you. Okay, now can I get a motion on approval of the minutes from May 9th? Thanks, Jeff. Thanks, Sarah. Any edits? All in favor? Any opposed? That motion carries. Moving on to Board of Education report. All of the Monroe County School Board Association meetings are done for the year. But we'll move on to audit oversight. Renee?
Hi, everyone. So we met on May 31st, the Audit Committee. We met with Tom Zuber from Mengil Metzger &amp; Barr and Company. And they explained the annual audit process and highlighted key areas of focus. New this year, the auditors will spend additional time reviewing the federal COVID money that was provided to the district. Additionally, Mr. Zuber reviewed fund balance and reserve fund amounts. Mr. Vesby and Ms. Reister also prepared a summary memo regarding estimated fund balance and reserves for the board, for our consideration this evening. Our district's internal auditor, Kathy Barrett, from Freed-Maxick, reviewed a risk assessment report and also provided an internal audit report. The risk assessment process identified that the district should consider a payroll review for next year, which I'm sure that's something we'll talk about more in some detail. The internal audit report found some areas of purchasing that could be improved, such as obtaining more quotes and conducting some additional requests for proposals for professional services. Some of the recommendations for purchasing have already been implemented. And Ginny Winter, the district's claim auditor, also provided a report. She discussed that the audit period from July through December, and in that time, there were about 92 warrants issued, but with no fraud identified. In addition, we briefly discussed the idea of providing the athletic department with some assistance due to the challenges associated with last minute purchasing and the scheduling of regional and state competitions. Mr. Vesby also discussed strategies to enhance the security of the district's financial software. Ms. Reister discussed the need to improve, I'm sorry, to approve a process for, sorry, it's been a long day. Ms. Reister discussed the need to approve a process that can be used to guide all state and federal grants. This guidance is now in place for the district. And finally, the committee reviewed the possible 2023, 24 meeting dates and discussed membership recommendations, including that of the chair position, which, if you will have me, I am more than happy to take over again. And that is all.
Thank you for that very detailed report. Anybody have any questions? Okay. We have a number of dates to remember. June 19th, schools will be closed for Juneteenth observance. The 24th of June is the Sutherland and Menon High School graduation. Sutherland is at 10 o'clock at the RIT Gordon Field House. And Menon is at 2:00 PM at the RIT Gordon Field House. July 11th will be the summer workshop. And also on July 11th is our next regularly scheduled meeting at 5:00 PM. And on the 12th will be the second day of the workshop. Next, if I could get a acceptance of the record of the May 16th budget vote and school board elections, get a motion for that? Thank you, Robyn. Thank you, David. Any comments? All those in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. That motion carries. Next, if I could get an approval of the superintendent's contract? A motion for that? Thank you, Sarah. Thank you, Renee. All those in favor? Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you. Next, we'll move on to the financial report. Mr. Vesby?
Yes, for your consideration is the acceptance of the treasures report. Again, as you can see, as part of the document, interest earnings, county sales tax, and then the reception of some additional state aid, including BOSI's aid, has really put us in a positive financial situation in terms of revenue. On the school lunch front, again, we're going to finish the year very strong, at large in part to not having all of our positions filled. So we're going to repurpose some of those funds to get ahead in terms of the replacement of equipment. That concludes the report.
Thank you. Can I get a motion for an acceptance of the treasures report? Thank you, Jeff. Thank you, Renee. Any questions? All those in favor? Any opposed? That motion carries.
Okay, next is the, for your consideration is the resolution for assistant treasurer. This is something that took place with new staffing. And that is, you know, just in case we need someone as a backup to sign checks, we have that in place. We need to do it now, just in case, but obviously this will be part of the reorg meeting as well.
May I get approval of the resolution for assistant district treasurer? Thank you, David. Thank you, Emily. Any questions? All those in favor? Any opposed? Great, that motion carries.
Okay, next is the approval for the risk assessment report that was previously reviewed.
Motion for the approval of the risk assessment report. Thank you, Renee. Thank you, Sarah. Any questions? All those in favor? Any opposed? That motion carries.
All right. Next, for your consideration is the internal audit report, again, as previously discussed.
Thank you. And a motion to approve the internal audit report. Thank you, Robyn. Thanks, Jeff. Any questions? All those in favor? Any opposed? That motion carries.
All right. Next, for your consideration is the federal funds procedural manual that Ms. Reister put together and was reviewed previously.
Can I please get a motion to approve the federal funds procedural manual? Thank you, Sarah. Thank you, Renee. Any questions? All those in favor? Any opposed? That motion carries.
Okay, next, for your consideration is the auction, auctioning of buses as outlined during the budget review process. The only note that I'll make, you know, the note to this is that we may not auction these all at once pending delivery, you know, shipment and delivery of the new buses. But we are going to designate it now so that way, you know, once those new buses come in, then we can put those in auction if that's the better way to go.
May I please get a motion to auction the buses? Thanks, Jeff. Thanks, Emily. Any questions? All those in favor? Any opposed? That motion carries.
Okay, next is the, for your consideration is the transportation contract for Transpo.
May I please get a motion to approve the Transpo transportation contract? Thanks, Dave. Thanks, Renee. Any questions? All those in favor? Any opposed? That motion carries.
And again, for your consideration, the contract that we have with Monroe and BOSI's for the upcoming school year.
May I please get a motion to approve the Monroe-BOSI's 1 transportation contract? Thank you, Sarah. Thank you, Emily. Any questions? All those in favor? Any opposed? That motion carries.
Okay, next, for your consideration is the budget line amendment. So due to the additional revenues that we received, we'd like to spend some additional funds on the replacement of some of our technology. And if you recall, that in the past, we have panels, displays, and this helps with that replacement plan. So I think this is a good use of revenue and to get ahead in our technology replacement plan. It also includes some desktop computers and then some enhancements in our LGIs. So that's, this is actual amendment to the budget from a revenue standpoint, increasing the expense to be able to buy some additional technology equipment.
May I please get a motion to approve the budget line item amendment request? Thank you, Robyn. Thank you, Emily. Any questions? All those in favor? Any opposed? That motion carries.
Okay, next, for your consideration is an adjustment in the unemployment reserve. As you recall, there were additional funds that were placed in the reserve because of the uncertainty associated with COVID. From an audit standpoint, we can't, we can no longer justify holding the money in that particular reserve. So the appropriate manner is to transfer those funds into the fund balance and then redistribute as we get to the year end. So that's also part of the next, you know, action that you'll see in terms of an up to recommended amount. So we've been able this year to make two adjustments for reserves, you know, that after they were, you know, kind of audited, you're going to make adjustments and you're going to put those funds into the proper reserve and not over reserve in one particular area. So that's what this is about.
May I please get a motion for the unemployment reserve? Thank you, Jeff. Thank you, Renee. Any questions on that? All those in favor? Any opposed? That motion carries.
Okay, for your consideration is the internal risk assessment corrective action plan as outlined earlier in the AOC report.
May I please get a motion on the 21, 22 internal audit risk assessment and corrective action plan? Thank you. And any questions? All those in favor? Any opposed? That motion carries.
Okay, next, for your consideration is the fund balance management report. This is a memo that's required to have the board take action prior to June 30th with the allocation of funds. So there's three funding sources that we have this year. We normally perform very well fiscally on the expense side. So we have some additional funds at the end of the budget on the expense side. But all year, I've been reporting interest earnings, county sales tax, right? And then an increase in spending in BOSI's, which generated more aid, so on the revenue side. Additionally, this year, we're making some of these transfers through reserve funds. So when you combine those three sources, we now have to give a preliminary idea in terms of how we're going to allocate those funds as of June 30th. So this is a very detailed memo that highlights what our recommendations are and granting an up to amount. Certainly, you know, these are not final, and they will be final pending audit. You know, to note this year is a new reserve that was recently approved, and that was the facilities reserve for a swimming pool. So we've designated a dollar amount in that reserve proportionally to the work that we have in the capital project. So that's kind of new this year. The rest of this, the information that's here, it's very detailed information that outlines every reserve we have, when it was created, and what the intended purpose is. So I think it gives the board a very detailed look at what those estimates are. And this is something- And this is something that we talked about at our AOC meeting too, that it does require some additional conversation for the public record, and there is additional scrutiny and in comptrollers audits that the board is on board in terms of fund balance policy, the allocation of reserves, and a full understanding of why we do what we do when it comes to these recommendations. So we cover it here, then we also cover it when we review the final audit. And we, you know, we really talk about it a little bit during budget as well in terms of the appropriative fund balance. So it's just, you know, for procedural purposes, it's good to note this for the minutes.
Okay, I'll make the motion that we pass the fund balance management, and can I get a second? Thank you, Sarah. All those in favor? Any opposed? That motion carries. The rest is on the consent agenda. Thank you, Mr. Vesby. You are done for three meetings. And we'll move on to the human resource report. Mr. Clark.
Good evening. First for your consideration is the professional staff report. See 14 certificated staff appointments, two certificated staff regular substitute to probationary appointments, one certificated staff full-time to part-time appointment, four certificated staff part-time to probationary appointments, two school psychologist intern appointments, two SRP to auxiliary appointments, two certificated staff resignations for retirement, one SRP resignation for retirement, one certificated staff resignation, and five SRP resignations.
May I please get a motion on the professional staff report? Any favor? Thanks, Jeff. Any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? That motion carries.
Thank you. Next for your consideration is the support staff report. We have three clerical appointments, two clerical resignations, two transportation appointments, one transportation resignation, one transportation resignation for retirement, 10 custodial maintenance appointments, two custodial maintenance resignations, one custodial maintenance retirement, one food service resignation, and one food service resignation for retirement.
May I please get a motion for the support staff report? Thank you, Renee. Thanks, Dave. Any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? That motion carries.
Thank you. And finally, for your consideration is the updated handbook for our food service worker unit. This three-year agreement addresses compression associated with increased minimum wage and hopefully will help with our recruitment and retention efforts.
May I please get a motion for approval of the Pittsburgh School Food Service Department handbook? Thanks, Emily, and thanks, Sarah. Any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? That motion carries.
Thank you.
Next up is Ms. Woods in the special education report.
Good evening. All CPSE and CSE recommendations are on the consent agenda.
Thank you. Next up, Mr. Piro in the superintendent's report.
There is not a need for an executive session this evening. You have in front of you policy recommendation for a first reading, number 8450, home hospital and institutional instruction or home bound instruction. Not sure if there's any questions at the, at the time. Okay. Okay, so I want to just thank Heather and Rich again. That was a remarkable presentation, and it really highlights the type of year I think we've all felt. I certainly have seen in my many walks around the buildings, there's a livelihood, there's, we're back to normal in almost every way, shape, or form. Today, we had our Sutherland senior bash, we had our Menden senior bash, we had our seniors going to the five elementary schools that they graduated from in their caps and gowns, we had them on the fields playing with kids, and we've had field days for our elementary, we've had all of our year-end celebrations that we normally had before COVID. So it's just a really nice feeling to see things back, back to where they, where they used to be and where they should be. The other, other thing I'd like to highlight that's, that's kind of behind the scenes that we've really never talked about, Pittsburgh has typically between a 98 and 100% graduation rate. And it's hard, I think, for an outside person to even think about what that, what that means. And I attended several meetings at Sutherland and Menden this year, which they had had many meetings before with students that are in jeopardy of not graduating, which means a team of, of people meet with the parents and the student, share with them why they're in jeopardy for not graduating, what they have to do to graduate. Made me also think about Heather's PowerPoint where she talked about the value of student voice and understanding your hardest child and what their lives are like. I couldn't be prouder of our staff for how creative and flexible they were in meeting the requirements for students to graduate. So what does that mean? That means having a staff member drive to their house, pick them up. Sometimes it's in the city of Rochester, sometimes it's in Pittsburgh. It means utilizing our tutoring center. It means our teachers staying late, coming early, giving up their free time to make sure that students are in there getting their instruction and assignments handed in. It doesn't happen in other places like this. So hats off to our staff for how hard they work and how, how much they genuinely care for every student and understanding the significance of what a diploma from Pittsburgh means and helping our students get there. So some real good success stories, stories from that, that I've been able to watch. So hats off to, to our staff for leaving literally no, no student left behind. The other thing I'd like to mention, we have kind of a sad note, and I'd like to say a few words. Ted is leaving us, he's retiring from the Board of Education, and I have a few prepared comments, Ted. And I froze out, so I'm going to read from this. Ted has committed nearly four decades to serving the Brighton Fire Department, and another decade serving on our school, serving our school community as a board member, board vice president and board president. The common theme is in his devotion to service and helping those around him. In both of these capacities, regardless of the hour of the day, Ted is always on call. He is certainly my first call when we lose power during a storm, have a flood in a school, have a downed tree from windstorms, or when I have questions about road conditions for snow days. Essentially, any natural disaster, Ted is always there, and he always answers the call, and he's able to respond. He's able to provide exceptional guidance, he's able to expedite responders, whether it be RG&E to get power back in our schools, whether it be for traffic control, or responding to accidents, you name it, he's always there. Ted has shown up to our 7:00 AM board tours after having to get up at 2:00 in the morning for an emergency, and he never complains. I have always likened his position as a board president to that of being the executive director for the fire department in Brighton, as he's putting out fires on both fronts. He handles both jobs the same with a sense of calm, expertise, trying to get to the root of the problem, and making sure whatever happened, that it doesn't happen again. The best part about Ted is that he is all in, in whatever endeavor he takes on. On the Board of Education, Ted made it his priority to meet students, to visit classrooms, to attend tours, to serve on county committees, negotiation committees, to ask questions, to provide feedback, to speak on opening day to about 1,000 staff members, to attend school functions, to assist with compliance issues, to pursue new and relevant policies, and so much more. What I appreciate the most from Ted is his highest level of character and his sense of integrity. It was Ted that actually led our Board of Education and our central office team through a process to hold all accountable for acceptable behavior, starting with board members. This led to a code of ethics policy that everyone agreed to. Ted is open to all feedback from stakeholders, and he will listen, he will process, he will reflect, and then he will offer an opinion, and he'll share that opinion in a way that's respectful. He has modeled for our community how to disagree respectfully, as well as the concept of compromise. Ted, I thank you for your years of service. You've made all of those around you better humans. I thank you for your strong leadership and student-focused heart and student-focused mind. You will be missed by all, especially by me, beyond the words I can share tonight. Thank you, Ted.
That was a lot. Thank you. With that, we'll move on to consent agenda. Can I get a motion on the consent agenda? Thank you, Dave. Thank you, Sarah. And all those in favor? Any opposed? That motion carries. Any old business? And under new business, I know, Robyn, you have something?
Yes. Ted, on behalf of the Pittsburgh Schools Board of Education members and with mixed feelings of happiness and sadness, we congratulate you on your retirement from the school board. Ted Arresti served our schools diligently and with purpose for the last nine years, and more recently, he led as the president of our board. Along the way, he participated on many PCSD and mixba committees, among them, the audit oversight, PCSD negotiating team, labor relations, and information exchange. We would like to share with you words that describe our observations about our board president, Ted. Jeff will share those.
Ted, your, your board colleagues submitted some words that they felt best described you, and in no particular order, those words were organized, thoughtful, generous, forthright, steady, principled, diligent, focused, effective, dedicated, resilient, moral, empathetic, loyal, and compassionate.
Ted, we're thankful that our community elected you three times to serve with us and former board members. Let's also remember that Ted is a son, a husband, a father to three daughters, a businessman, and a community volunteer. We acknowledge the many hours spent away from your family, and thank you for, and we thank them for sharing you with our community. Please accept this small token of our appreciation. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We salute you, Ted, and thank you for your service.
Thank you all very much. Also, under new business, I have a few thoughts that I'd like to share this evening. As this is my final meeting as president and member of the Board of Education, I wanted to take this opportunity to make a few remarks and say a few thank yous about my past nine years on the Board of Education. There was no one project or issue that was the big one. They were all important to me. Sure, there were highs and there were lows, but that's to be expected. I'm incredibly proud of the accomplishments of the entire PCSD community. I'm convinced that there is nothing that can't be achieved when we all work collaboratively together. Our community needs to stay strong in its convictions to put children first and remain apolitical. If we all meet in the middle, great things can happen. We need to continue to collaborate with all stakeholders. I encourage those in the community that want to bring in their feedback to the Board of Education with consideration, to do so with an understanding that there are always many perspectives to an issue. The Board of Education has the obligation to consider all of them and do what is best for the kids. A number of thank yous, and bear with me, but they're important. Deb Carpenter, Cindy Coleman, and Ronnie Walker, they have all provided guidance over the years and made sure I was on the right track. I really appreciate it. Thank you to Superintendent Piro and the entire central office team. You are leaders in your respective disciplines, and our community could not be more fortunate to have you leading the way. Thank you to the entire team of staff that carries out the mission, the vision, mission, and values of our district every day with dedication, empathy, and passion. Thank you to the PDTA, PDAA, and PTSA leadership for always working in the best interests of students. Thank you to our community for giving me the opportunity to serve and represent you. It has truly been an honor. Thank you to my family, without whose support I could not have served these past nine years. A lot of sacrifices were made, and I appreciate their valuing my poured service. Finally, to my fellow BOE members, past and especially present, I am humbled to have served alongside you. I applaud each of you for your selfless service, professionalism, and commitment to the PCSD. Stay centered on the mission, listen to all, but never stray from our true north, the kids, and you won't go wrong. Thank you all very much. I remind you all that we ask you to state your name and your address when you begin speaking. Remember that we have young listeners watching and learning, and we ask you to keep your comments to three minutes or less. Shurdi Basim?
Good evening. My name is Shurdi Basim. I live in Two Sunrise Hill, Pittsburgh. I'm here today just to make a comment about our dire need for air conditioning in our schools, school district and all of our buildings. With, you know, the recent warming trends in our schools, there are more weeks now than ever before where we actually need some form of cooling and some sort of air filtration. I know that has come up previously in different ways, but I think, given our recent air quality issues and just overall warming trends, the kids have been coming home very complaining with how warm and really untenable the day is. And, I mean, it's worth pointing out that recently, there's been an increasing body of literature we can point to, and I can send links to, that points to the detriments in learning with even an increase in any, in heat. And, and there's just Google heat and learning, and you'll see there is about a 1% decrease in learning for each degree the temperature's gone up in a year, and this has been controlled for all, you know, all elements. So I think this is going to become a big issue across the country, and especially in, you know, where infrastructure needs to be updated, and we do need to think about what we need to do for, for our systems and infrastructure and Hwac. Again, you know, it's hard to notice, I think we have some sort of AC on right now. It's a really mild day. Imagine how the kids must feel in a very small room all day in all of our buildings. So just food for thought, and, you know, again, the pandemic has taught us that we need to be prepared for various things, and I know that the air filtration has come up through the pandemic, and we really need to think about more innovative ways to update our infrastructure and really, you know, be guided by our North Star, which is our children and their ability to learn. And I think that this, these buildings are creating a detriment to that learning, you know, learning environment. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I would just offer to, we have a number of speakers that are going to be speaking on this topic, if we could try and avoid repetitiveness, but certainly we welcome you to make your points. Next up is Meredith Graham.
Thank you for taking my comment. I'm Meredith Graham. I live at 21 North Fieldgate. Okay, so I'm also here to talk about air quality and air conditioning, and I know that you all know how it affects illness spread and absenteeism, and how reducing CO2 levels and keeping a reasonable ambient temperature increases performance. But I'd like to just consider, what are we doing right now to make plans in place to add air conditioning or add increased air filtration? I don't believe there's anything at all in place to add air conditioning or to, to go beyond what's required by the minimum standard for air condition, or air quality. I'd like you to consider your home. When you go home tonight, do you have air conditioning at your home? When you are at your office, wherever you work, is there air conditioning at that office? When you have to focus on something and really learn something or come up with a report or whatever you're doing, do you have air conditioning in that condition? Because I bet you do, and our kids don't. They're on the third floor at Sutherland, they're on the second floor at Menden and Barker, and they are not with air conditioning. They open the window, and then if they have allergies- They open the window, and then if they have allergies, they suffer even more. If you've ever been in the room at Barker Road Middle School, when students are finding out what room their final exam will be in, now, this usually is quite a substantial portion of their grade, they're really worried about doing well on that test, and most every single time, it's happening in June. It's happening right at the end of the school year. If you've ever been in that room when it's announced what room their exam is going to be in, you will hear a resounding yay, or a very depressed no, every single time. Because if it's in an air-conditioned room, like the language area, which unfortunately isn't going to be air-conditioned anymore, because once the capital improvement project happens, that's being taken away. So if you've ever been there, you will know where those kids are going to take their final, based on the reaction from those kids when that's announced. If it's announced that they're going to be on the second floor at Barker for their exam, they are sad. They know they're going to have to work extra hard, and they're going to sweat through the whole two hours. We are literally watching our world burn down around us this past week. You can't open the windows when air quality is so poor. And if we are knowingly doing nothing to prepare for the different world that we are going to experience due to climate change, I think that amounts to a crime against our current and future students. I don't believe we can continue to just kick the can down the road and hope someone else does something in the future. We need strong leadership to bring our community into the future with the resources that are essential for learning, which includes air conditioning and improvements to air quality. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Angela Wilks.
Hi, my name is Angela Wilks. I live at 14 Thomas Grove. It's actually my daughter's 13th birthday today, but it was more important for, to her for me to be here, talking to you right now. She's a student at Barker, and she said it's so hot and uncomfortable there, and that's why we need to start planning now for installing air conditioning in all the Pittsburgh schools. The largest school district outside of Buffalo, Williamsville, passed a capital project last year to install air conditioning in all of its schools without raising taxes. To get it passed, Williamsville School District cited studies that show the climate in Western New York has been steadily getting warmer. During this current school year, there have been 18 days that were over 80 degrees, and cooling in a few days over 90, and almost two months of the school year has been over 75 degrees. In addition, there have been 76 days over 70 degrees. That's over 43% of the school year. Today is a 70-degree day, and you have the air conditioning out in this building. The argument that we only need air conditioning a few days in our area no longer holds true. Older buildings retain heat, so even if the outdoor temperature is mild, it's still very hot inside the schools. The Williamsville School District is also upgrading their heating and air ventilation systems to increase air filtration to the MERV-13 at the same time as adding air conditioning. Upgrading to a MERV-13 rated filter can improve the system's efficacy in removing viruses from circulated air. They are using this as an opportunity to make their heating systems more efficient and improving their air quality in their buildings. As we saw last week, because of the wildfires in Canada affecting our air quality, it's not only safe to just open windows and use fans to cool students. Poor air quality can negatively affect students and staff who have asthma or any other upper respiratory illness or conditions, not to mention those who have allergies. Opening classroom windows, even if the air quality is good, is still insufficient because the outside air doesn't reach the hallways and other interior spaces in the buildings, and it doesn't always adequately cool classrooms, even with the use of fans. Plus, having the windows open can distract from the learning process, given there's lawn mowers running and winds or fans blowing papers around the classroom. Studies have shown the negative impact on learning and the significant loss of learning from higher temperatures in classrooms. Adding air conditioning is a capital improvement that would benefit every single student and staff member in the district. Yes, there's a significant cost added, but other school districts have figured out how to do this even without raising taxes, and we need to do the same. We need to start the planning process now because the trend of warmer temperatures continues to rise in our area, and the outside air quality continues to worsen. We must make this a priority, evaluate the cost, and how to fund this. This is a health and safety issue that needs to be addressed immediately so we can protect the students and staff. I'm aware that since Calhoun's is geothermal and has air conditioning in many large spaces, the staff, students and staff don't experience the same overheating issues in warmer weather. The administrative building and the main offices in many, if not all, the schools also have air conditioning, since some staffs are on 12-month contracts. I'm sure you've already had to use your air conditioning many times over the current school year. I agree the administrators and principals work hard and should be comfortable, but shouldn't we also ensure that our children and all of our staff members are also comfortable, no matter what school they attend or work at? Why do only the students that attend Calhoun's deserve to learn in a comfortable environment where the students that attend Barker and the other Pittsburgh schools are literally sweating in their classrooms? Don't all the students in our district deserve the opportunity to learn in a safe and healthy environment? I urge you to consider this proposal now. Thank you.
Thank you. We have two additional comments that were sent in to be read. I've gone through them. All of the points in these have already been stated, so what I'm going to do is I will circulate them so that all the board members do get a chance to look at them. One was from Michelle Ricks, 8 Turtle Creek, Pittsburgh, New York, and the other was from Dorothy Barker, 17 North Field Gate. So I'll circulate these to all the board members so that they can get to see them, but since all the information in them has already been covered, I'm going to move along. Oh, you are here. Okay. Everything in yours, you are Michelle Ricks, or Dorothy? If you want to read it, that's fine. It's, you have, you have a copy?
Yes.
Okay.
Hi, I'm Dorothy Bauch Barker. I'm at 17 North Field Gate. We have a responsibility to our students and staff to improve air quality, including air conditioning in our school buildings. As we have seen with COVID and with the recent wildfire smoke, it is important for the health of our community and our students' ability to learn that we provide clean, healthy air. Concurrent with the smoky air quality, closing windows increase the heat to untenable conditions. We must provide air conditioning. We don't need to cool down to 65 degrees. We just need to take the edge off so that students and teachers are not distracted from learning by discomfort and sweat. Two out of the 10 months of the school year are already summer months, and the temperatures are increasing. We've already had hot days in April and May this year. This is not to take away from the value of fresh air, but it's currently not functional to depend on open windows. School buildings are already hot year-round, even in the winter. In summer and shoulder seasons, it becomes unbearable for the students. It may take long-term planning, but we can accomplish the goal of air conditioning to support our learners, who are the whole reason we have a school district. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Amanda Casey.
Thank you for taking my comment. Good evening. My name is Amanda Casey. I live at 2985 Clover Street, and I have a first grader at Jeff Road. First of all, thank you so much for your hard work and dedication to our students in Pittsburgh. We appreciate everything that you do. We understand that over the summer, you will be deciding on whether to establish a district-level sustainability committee. We provide, to provide some additional data to inform your decision, myself and a few other parents, some of whom are here tonight, decided to distribute a petition to see whether other members of the Pittsburgh community felt, as we did, that a committee is needed to help our district become more environmentally sustainable. We became, we began with a pen and paper petition and quickly gathered 30 signatures, so we decided to do an online petition and, just starting last week, and we got over 140 signatures so far and counting. Given more time and more, more time and with through social media, we are confident we could gather many more signatures. We have brought copies of the petition for you to review if you'd like. I am, I urge you to read the heartfelt comments that signers wrote from the form. Many identified ways that Pittsburgh could take progress on these issues. Some have already been told today about rising climate temperatures. Many identified ways that Pittsburgh could make progress on these issues. For example, through composting, reducing plastic consumption in the lunchrooms, planting gardens, hosting Earth Week events, installing solar panels, heat pumps, et cetera. They were, they want action and not simple, and not simply a committee, but a committee to identify priorities and resources and coordinate these efforts in a, is a good start. Transitioning to more sustainable practices, products, and energy sources can be costly, at least in the short term, and complicated, and educators and administrators have enough on their plates. A district sustainability committee composed of students, administrators, members of the board, educators, Pittsburgh community members, and parents with expertise in these issues could bring much-needed focus and creativity in these transitions. Area school districts already have such committees, and we can learn from their work. We were told that you would take this idea more seriously and faster if the Pittsburgh students were brought, if students brought it to you, but we wonder why they should have to come here to give you this idea when many of them that we've talked to have already talked to their principals in schools. So we, as parents, are advocating for them today. The wildfire smoke that blanketed Pittsburgh last week was a stark reminder that we do not escape the effects of climate change or the changing climate, and we certainly should not be adding to the problem. We need effort, effortful leadership, such as yourselves, to make this happen. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next up, Amy Ord.
Hello. I wanted to speak really quickly tonight about my concern regarding politics and activism in your schools. You have philosophies that are being taught as reality, things like gender identity, race, and now there's transformative social-emotional learning, which is basically social-emotional learning infused with race and gender theory plus social justice activism. Beliefs and emotions are looked at now through an equity lens because even your emotions can be inequitable. Relationship skills are now in terms of your skin color, race, and gender. Kids examine their bias under this model, even though they may not even be biased, but you have to make sure that they learn that they are, and you think in terms of what's best for the group is emphasized over the individual. You know, this is a little strange to me because in the real world, kids will have social-emotional learning problems, and telling them that it's their bias, or their white privilege, or that they're oppressed, you know, when they flip a desk, they're just going to look at you, and they're not going to learn anything from that. These topics affect a student's sense of self and mental health. No one in your district, I keep realizing, that's making these type of decisions has any experience or background in mental health. Some of these systems, you know, it's maybe a surprise in some districts, but the systems-level consultant in social-emotional learning behavior and mental health supports in a school is typically the school psychologist. They handle these MTSS models. This was, you probably can't see it, but this is the one you have for, for mental health, I believe. And, you know, I think your model is just missing a few key components. You know, at the tier one, at this first level, you don't really have a curriculum. It's a big problem if you don't have a solid, research-based curriculum. I've been asking for over a year what, what, what you do with the kids. I get told different things. I, one time, got told there was no curriculum, so I just want to know what you're doing. It should be the same throughout all the elementary schools, in the middle, and the high school. Data collection is another area in MTSS models. It's very important. Every student in your school and their progress should be able to be graphed, and you are supposed to take that data and have like data team meetings, and they provide the justification for you moving up and down to the more intense levels. I'm not quite sure that's happening here. I went to a PTSA DEI Zoom meeting recently, and I really did find out a little bit more than what I was being told. I mean, I heard you have a BOSIS consultant, so I looked them up, and they seem to be a very, well, they're like an activist. It says an activist right under their name. I'm just wondering how much the BOSIS has that's influencing you. If it was me, I wouldn't be paying a lot of money to the BOSIS for this model. Here, teachers are being put in roles, I've said this before, to be the social-emotional learning teacher, mental health therapist, and teacher, besides no training, and I mean no degree, teachers are told.
If you could wrap it up, that'd be great.
Yes, that SEL has to live in the adult before it can live in the students, so teachers have to sometimes transform themselves before they can transform their students. So there are going to be kids who struggle with SEL.
If you could wrap it up.
Behavior and mental health, so, and you're going to just have to provide them with the real skills that they will need, not identity politics. Politics philosophies never have and never will result in good academic and behavioral outcomes for children, but school, skill instruction prescriptive and tailored by the right professionals will. It's very easy to just throw up your fist and say, we're going to activate, but...
You're still reading.
You.
Thank you. Michael Shaughnessy?
Oh, okay, thanks. Mike Shaughnessy for Standish Way. I have attended several Pittsburgh Central School District Board meetings over the past three years, and I've personally been involved with comments to the board and observed comments from Pittsburgh community, district, parents, and associates. I have always believed that the board cared and was generally interested in the comments presented. Of recent, I've been concerned, and I believe that although the interest and concern for the Pittsburgh Central School District students exists among the parents, among, among the board, although actions are, and feedback in many cases are non-existent. Even though Superintendent Piro may provide some feedback occasionally, I'm convinced that another party is directing the board and group in making decisions for the Board of Education. As mentioned at a previous board meeting, more than 40 school districts across America are suing social media giants like Facebook, Snapchat, TikTok in federal court for them creating a youth and health crisis. School districts allege that the companies have knowingly caused harm to children with their malicious algorithms. They are seeking damages for the larger mental health services needed. Here at home, ongoing or not, how does Pittsburgh Central School District plan to address such situations to avoid dramatic and serious social media incidents in our schools? Maybe much less or no access to cellphone use during the school or classroom hours like it was 12 to 13 years ago, as I recall, in the Pittsburgh Central School District is a place to start. Senator Marsha Blackburn is taking another swing at the social media companies to make an effort to keep children and users safe online, to protect the children on social media. Along with Senator Richard Blumenthal, Blackburn reintroduced the Kids Online Safety Act, which aims to require social media platforms to shield children from addictive algorithms and inappropriate content, create tools for parents to report abuse, and undergo annual audits. It has become impossible to deny that our children are suffering at the hands of big tech. So far, more than a third of the US Senate have signed on as original cosponsors. Even our Senator, New York Senator Schumer, says he is 100% behind the bill in efforts to protect our kids online. If passed, Kids Online Safety Act would require media companies to, for example, make their strongest privacy settings the default for anyone under 18, create reporting tools for the parents to identify harmful behavior and report abuse. The bill holds big tech accountable and puts the burden on the social media platform. Social media is aggravating and exacerbating the mental health crisis that's faced students and all of us in this country, and, and it is cruel, a cruel truth that it is being, that it is by design and not by accident. Lastly, I recently was made aware of some graphic storybooks, Heartstopper, volumes one through three, that I obtained at the Pittsburgh Public Library. First, first printing was January 20, 2022. These four volumes are in the Barker Middle School. The literary significance of these books is severely lacking.
If you could wrap it up, please.
What's the point for these to be in the Barker Middle School when these books can be obtained in the public, Pittsburgh Public Library? Book banning is not the point here. These books have zero purpose in our school libraries. I provided you with some examples of some of the content in these books for your review.
Thank you.
Mike, just to answer a couple of your questions. At the middle school, both Barker Road and Calhoun's Road, cell phones are not permitted. So at the middle schools, we don't have cell phones. They're in their, they're in their lockers, they're in their bags. They're not out during the day at all. And that's something new this year. And then at the high schools, students are only allowed to take out their cell phones in classes if they have permission from their teacher, so that's, that's also new this year. We also brought in a pretty amazing speaker to work with our kids at Calhoun's, every grade level, Barker, every grade level, Mendon, every grade level, Sutherland, every grade level, and then we hosted a parent night, which we probably had about 200 people show, around the, the dangers of social media and the implications of doing the wrong thing or what to do if you're receiving the... or what to do if you're receiving the wrong things or inappropriate things. So we are doing quite a bit more relative to education, bringing in real practical strategies and speakers for kids, as well as through practice, reducing the amount of student use on phones and totally eliminating at the middle school for now.
That's good to hear.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
Next up is William Skues.
On February fourteenth, I submitted requests for the reevaluation of four pornographic books that are in the Pittsburgh schools. On February fifteenth, I received acknowledgement of receipt from Assistant Superintendent Melanie Ward. This began the sixty-day process of reevaluating the books as cited in the PCSD policy manual. I received the final report from the superintendent on May eleventh, almost ninety days later. Along the way, I received some weak excuses for the committee's not complying with the sixty-day process, which I interpreted as delaying tactics. After all, it is the PCSD's policy manual that lays out the sixty-day process, not me. It will surprise no one that these committees unanimously approve each of the four pornographic books for which I requested reevaluation. The committees were made up of PCSD Assistant Superintendent for Instruction, Mendon High School Principal, Sutherland High School Principal, Standards Leader for Secondary ELA/Mendon High School English Department Leader, Standards Leader for Library K to Twelve, Mendon High School Librarian, Sutherland High School Librarian, Sutherland High School English Department Leader, and the PTSA co-president. I will comment on one of the books and its reevaluation committee's comments. The book's title is, "This Book Is Gay." The committee said, quote, "The committee felt strongly this was an important book to have available to our students," unquote, and quote, "This book is a survival guide for LGBTQ-plus students in that it fills a need that has not been filled previously by other resources," unquote. These are interesting comments, given the sexually graphic material contained in this book. For example, page one seventy-three discusses in detail various homosexual activities such as handies, blow, and bumming. Beyond this, page one fifty-six explains how sex apps work, how to upload your picture, how to find the nearest homosexuals, how and where to arrange meeting these strangers for sexual activity. Is this what the committee means by important? How young boys in the Pittsburgh schools can arrange meetings with adult men and instruct them on the activities to perform when they meet? As I stated in a previous Board of Education meeting, federal and state laws prohibit providing and distributing pornographic material to minors. We now have the members of the Board of Education, the superintendent, and the members of the reevaluation committees on record for choosing, buying, defending, and distributing pornographic material to minors.
I do have to respond to that, Mr. Skew. So the, just to clarify some misinformation that you shared, the public, the board education policy, and I'll quote the language in there. It says, "The review committee will submit a written report of the results of their review to the superintendent in sixty days of receipt of the formal objection," which they did. I did receive it within the sixty-day window, and they weren't weak excuses. As a matter of fact, what, what I shared with you was the following. An email. Dear Mr. Skew, thank you for submitting your book challenge. I apologize for the length of time it took to process this book. We received challenges for several different books at the same time, and our process was designed for a single book challenge. Given that multiple books were challenged, and in most cases, Pittsburgh only housed one or two in totality within our libraries, we had to borrow copies from as far, I'm not going to name schools, but we had to borrow from nine different districts so that everyone on the committee could have nine books so they can read it from start to finish. That's thirty-six books we had to borrow because we only had, in some cases, one in the entire district. Additionally, this process involved a committee of nine different members that needed to read each book in its entirety, and then both evaluate and process the challenges individually, and then collectively as a committee. Attached is the work and the findings. Thank you. So that was my email. I don't think that was a lame excuse, and for clarity, the policy was met. The committee did their work and made a recommendation to me in sixty days. So I, I also just feel like I have to, because it's a wide audience that we're streaming to, clarify something else. You quoted one piece of the rationale. What you quoted was, "The committee felt strongly this was an important book to have available to our students, and this book is a survival guide for LGBTQ+ students in that it fills a need that has not been filled previously." So you, that's what you chose to pull out of, of, a breadth of, of work that we submitted. So I want to read what you received. Respect, responsive to this book. Mr. Skew, committee members acknowledge that there are passages in the book that could raise concerns for many people, but those are not the people for whom the book was written. One section of the book that has caught the attention of those filing objection is chapter nine, which you read from, "The Inns and Outs of Gay Sex." Committee members acknowledged potential concerns, but also appreciated the value as much-needed information for LGBTQ-plus students that we are not good at providing through them in any other means. Throughout this section, as in all sections of the book, the author takes care to emphasize safe practices. The importance of safety, physical and emotional, is also emphasized throughout chapter eight, where to meet people like you. While the discussion of dating apps is concerning to some, and passages from this section are included in the objections filed, the author again takes care to emphasize the importance of safety in very practical ways. The final sections of the book, the chapter for parents and caregivers, as well as the resources, also felt important and were applauded by committee members as providing needed information and support for the intended audience of the book. The committee's discussion reflected what we know about the statistics for young people who come out as LGBTQ+ and are not welcome or supported by their families or communities, and the toll it takes on individuals' mental health, too often resulting in suicide attempts. We would certainly want all young people to be able to have honest and supportive conversations at home, and are concerned for those that are unable to do so. The book could facilitate those discussions, or at least help young people feel they are not alone, while also providing them with access to much-needed information. People aren't going to pick the book up if they don't need it, and our circulation records show that. Only one student has checked out this book in the library in the entire district. So we, we, we went through, I, I don't know how, how many hours and days in this process for books that we have one or two students over a three-year period checking, checking out, and they check it out because they, they feel a need to check it out. However, the librarian reports that the book appears to have been visited by other students over time, to be, to be fair. The book doesn't teach you to be gay. It's not a how-to or groomer resource, meaning it doesn't make you gay, but it might make you a better ally. Our kids' safety, their ability to be who they are, and our ability to provide a safe and welcoming environment is paramount. Retaining this book in our libraries is part of establishing that safe and welcoming environment. Finally, it was noted that this book received significantly strong reviews. And so that was a review that was sent to you for one book. And I, and I, and I just feel I have to explain that when you take one sentence of something that was sent and bring it here, people are leaving with a different impression. The committee that met, and I sat in that meeting for a, a short period of time, it was emotional. It was hard, it was thoughtful, and it all came back to our students and their, and their needs. The other thing I just want to clarify, because I worry about who's on the other side watching this, is we fully support and adore our LGBTQ-plus students. We want to support them, we want to assist them, we want to work with families. We, we want an environment, and I'll say it again, where all students feel affirmed, welcomed, and cared for in this district. Thank you.
So for one last time, may I please have a motion to adjourn? I'll make that motion, and can I have a second? Thank you, Jeff. All those in favor? Any opposed? We stand adjourned. Next meeting is July eleventh, twenty twenty-three.